Going forward.
I agree to point on that. When we're looking at it, I don't believe that the old building without the renovation can really be retrofitted to benefit from the geothermal. It's not the ventilation in the old building, and I don't believe you can easily put it in. So it really has to come packaged with the renovation work to really take advantage of geothermal to the efficiency that the architect has designed. And for a lot of the special warrant articles, windows and such, those are things that can be done. You know that that money is pooling for a specific reason. I don't think, setting aside $50,000 here, just knowing that it's going to lower the bottom line, you know, the next time this comes around for a vote if it has to, is really a good storage place for the money. So, you know, I would have to also agree that as a standalone full package, I, you know, support it, but just as a holding place, I don't agree with it.
Any other discussion? Take the vote. Mark Dikoff, no.
Steve Muller, no.
Lawrence Tilly, no.
Professor McDonald, no.
Barbara Howard, no.
Lauren Kuhn, no.
Mr. Draper, yes.
And yes, six noes. All right, we've got the spreadsheet for Article VII. With all the changes to be made, so our bonnet line is 13 million, 75,092. I need...
Okay, what I'm gonna do is for discussion.
Okay.
Mark, can you read that number again, please?
It's 13 mil...well, let me have him make his...I need a motion on Articles...
Okay, I make a motion for discussion purposes to accept Article VII as presented...
But we haven't put our number in.
Uh...
That's why I wanted to see...
My number's the one that should be there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You're right.
You're right.
Say that again. We do zero?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No?
My number's the one that's supposed to be there.
No, our number's down below. Their number is...
No, 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 no.
No, no, our number goes to the people.
We have to...
Our their number, our number goes to the people, kid.
You're gonna amend that.
Yeah, but our Alton Budget Committee recommends, no, 13, whatever.
Their number goes...
Time number goes to the person.
Okay, so the number that I have is 13 million, 75,092.
Correct.
Right, and so, and I will amend that to add... Well, which line are you gonna... To the...
Business Services 2510.
2510. Add $500. So you're gonna add, and one time stipend, and subtract $500 from 2310, School Board.
Second.
The bottom number stays the same, but the... Subtract $500.
I second that.
Virgil's seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So I'll amend Article VII.
But you're not moving anything in or out, right?
Pardon?
You're not moving anything in or out, right? I mean, the number stays the same.
Right, number stays the same, but I want the people to know. The amendment number will be 13 million, 75,092. Second?
Second.
Take the vote. Or discussion, sorry, discussion.
I absolutely appreciate the time that you've been here. You've come in, you've spoken, you've given information, and, you know, regarding the presence of other people, I think that your actions on that should be shown by voting for those people or not voting for those people, and I don't think the Budget Committee should be a punitive, personal tool.
Well, I absolutely disagree. This is an RSA that the School Board is supposed to have a representative here. They get paid by the taxpayers. If they're not doing their job, they shouldn't be getting the money, and it is time for punitive. I disagree with you 100 percent.
You may.
And this, for us to sit here 45 minutes, I've done this since 1994, at no time have I ever seen the Budget Committee sit here for 45 minutes punching a calculator and scrap paper to do this. This is out of control. We are not getting representation. The people are not getting representation from these people. And tonight, another item, here we come up with another one, where they haven't even voted for their number. Why? Because we haven't had a meeting. There is no reason they could not have had a special meeting. Steve asked them that question. There's no answer to that. They have a duty to the taxpayers. They're not fulfilling it. And that is the same reason I'm upset, I'm very upset, I'm very upset.
I don't blame you.
That they haven't been showing up to these Buildings and Grounds Committees meetings.
Whoever ought to ask.
Yeah, and...
Very upset, and I disagree. It is, something's gotta be done, and this vote 'em out is not sending the message to them.
I agree that, you know, there should be somebody filling the seat that's assigned.
Then what are you gonna do about it? It doesn't get done.
I don't believe they've assigned anybody yet.
One person at a time.
There's five of them, and they're not doing their job.
I have never seen where a warrant article has been presented, warrant articles, for over $20 million, and not one member of the School Board, not even the member that should be at this meeting, ex officio, because that's their job. That's part of their job description on the most important Budget Committee meeting that these people probably have ever gone through, ever, okay, due to the size of the warrant article, and they decided that they would not show up. It is not coincidence, in my estimation, that six people or five people, you know, all were too busy for the most important meeting of the year. Going forward.
All right, are we ready to take the vote, or is there more discussion? You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Mac?
Yes.
Our number is the number going into this article, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Their number, no?
No, our number.
All right, I'll read it. "To see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not include appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separate amounts set forth on the budget proposed with the warrant or amends by a vote of the first session for the purpose set forth, then totaling," what did I say? 13 million, 75,092.
Correct.
"Should this article be defeated, default budget shall be 13,113,354, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the school district or by law, or a governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 401310 and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only." Take a vote.
Mm-hmm.
Mark Dikoff, yes?
Steve Muller, yes.
Lawrence Tilly, no.
Professor McDonald, yes.
Barbara Howard, yes.
Lauren Kuhn, yes.
Chris Draper, no.
Five yeses, two noes, pass. Article eight. A motion we accept Article eight as presented.
For discussion purposes, I'll second. Okay, I have, um, first, um... I have a problem with the numbers that are shown in the warrant article that shows the estimated increase in 2012, 2013 at 64,990.58. I believe that the impact to the voters is wrong in that respect, and also for 2013, 2014 at 46,519.59. And this is the reasoning. There are a significant amount of staff people that work for the school district and for the school, that their contractors, contracts mirror the change in benefits of the teachers. I believe that these numbers are absolutely correct for the teachers, but they're understated for the impact to the tax, the tax, to the taxpayers. As an example, if health insurance, the co-pay goes from 10 percent to 9 percent for the teachers, I have not seen where that has not gone, that exact deduction has not gone to all the staff and professional people. And I don't have a problem that they're getting it. I have a problem that the taxpayers are not seeing what the true cost is. And if I had seen, and I just had a chance to read the contract yesterday, because we just got it, you know, on Tuesday, if I would have, if I had the time and the opportunity, I would have made a right-to-know request or a request from a Budget Committee member of what would be the additional cost, because I believe that cost to be significant. So I believe because it's understated, I think that's, I think that's a critical reason why I have a problem, the contract in this form, the way it's being presented to the voters.
Steve, you said, can I just get clarification from you? You said that the health insurance co-pay would go from 10 to 9 percent?
Mm-hmm.
What it is, is it's anyone who is on the POS plan, which is the more expensive, is paying 10 percent right now.
Mm-hmm.
That POS plan would no longer be paid for by the district. They would be responsible for paying the extra amount to remain on a POS plan. So a sense, excuse me, they would be paying 9 percent on an HMO plan, which is less expensive to the district and to the person themselves, however, if they have to pick up the added extra if they stay on that POS. So it is less expensive, so it's less expensive to the district. But actually, what that is stating is their increase the second year is going from a 9 percent HMO to a 10 percent, so they will be paying a percent more on co-pay, just to make that clarification.
Wapping 1 percent, and your support staff is paying 36 percent.
36.1.
And at the high school, they're paying 30 percent.
Yep. I just wanted to make that clarification, because I thought you said they were going down, meaning they were paying less of a co-pay. You said from 10 to 9.
Could you explain it to me again, because I'm not following the rationale.
Okay.
The way it's written, the way I read it, I'm probably wrong.
No, 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 no.
Help me out, please.
Nope. Let me, I was gonna see if I get something...
2012, 2013, town's paying 91 percent.
No.
2013, or, yeah, the voters are paying 91 percent.
They're paying, and they're paying 10 percent now.
Where does it say there?
Well, 91 percent, the difference is 9 percent.
Right, and then in 2013, 2014, taxpayers are only paying 90 percent. So the employer, or employee pays 10 percent. Right?
There will be an increase to the employee of 1 percent co-pay. As Barbara said, it's not a lot, but it is at a percent more. Therefore, it makes the districts go down slightly.
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
And we're also making it up in their salary that year. So they're gonna get, they're gonna get a salary increase to cover the cost of their co-pay that they're gonna, so, we're still paying.
Yeah, that's, of course, you know, the salary, you know, the salaries...
Absolutely.
The salaries go, you know, the salaries go up for those people as well, and, you know, things like longevity bonuses, things like that as well. Correct?
That's not going up.
That's not going up?
No.
Well, yeah, based, okay, based on the last contract.
Correct.
I understand.
Thank you.
Yes, Laurie? Can someone tell me, on the salary schedule, if I was a teacher on Track 1, and I'm currently at Step 13, what will be my pay next year?
If this passes, there's going to be an increase of 1 percent, and you're going to go up one step. So your total would be, so you're on, I'm sorry, can you, you said Track 1, Step...
13.
13.
13.
This current year that we're talking right now?
I'm on 13, and so next year, I'm gonna go on, I'm gonna, no, I'm sorry, I'm on 12 now, this contract goes in, and I'm gonna, I'm going, I'm 13 now, and I'm going up to 14 when this contract goes in. What will be my increase?
Do you have an old contract?
Is that where they're making 50,222 now?
I got 51,891.
Oh, okay, Track 13, not Track 12.
Right.
Gotcha, okay.
I'm here, and now the contract comes in, I'm gonna go to here. I got zero raise, right?
From, I just wanna make sure, from 11, 12, that's why I wanna look, I don't have the...
Oh.
I'm coming to you, because I know you don't have the... So right now, you're saying they're sitting right here, or right here?
Right there.
On 13?
No, I'm, I'm going, yeah, I'm gonna go in, I wanna know why, for three years, this person's not gonna get any kind of raise. This person's gonna get 51,891.
Right, from 13 to 16.
51,891 the next year.
That's the way the schedule's been for...
Pardon? Come on up, come on.
That's the way the schedule's been on that top tier for a while now.
Huh?
The way the schedule's been, they max out at a certain percent, you know, they max out at a certain level, and if you look at it, it's almost like a ladder effect. It'll do the same thing on Track 2, Track 3, Track 4, right across the bottom.
Just one step left.
Right, one step. Now, the way this is, though, is anyone at Step 16, 16 and higher, yes.
But these other people sit there and freeze for three years.
Right.
And they agreed to that.
Correct. From the current contract we're in right now, the salary schedule was increased all the cells by 1 percent.
Right.
And then on top of that, each person moves up a step from one, anywhere, if they fall on between 1 to 15.
Except for the people on, on those three years, four years.
Right.
For four years, teachers don't get any raise if they're on those four years.
The first year they do, because the whole schedule is increased by 1 percent.
But next year, between this 12, 13, and 13, 14, everybody else is getting 1 percent...
Not quite every, oh, yeah.
Well, everybody gets 1 percent, but, yeah.
Yes. This is the existing, I don't wanna say the existing, I know it's very confusing, this whole salary schedule, because I know we've all been round and round on it. I think maybe, I certainly wasn't in the district working for it when the salary schedule, how much in between each step was created. I don't know, you know, the increments in between each steps and where they max out, depending on what track. I can only give you my opinion as to what I think this was set up to try to do, was possibly to motivate or to entice teachers to increase their education, to move tracks, so that as they get older, make more money, and realize that they're topping out at the top of the salary schedule in that track, that they improve on their education, they move tracks to make more money so that they can...
But if they don't increase their education...
Correct.
...and they're first-year teacher, in the first year of this contract, they're gonna start at $33,800. Next year, no increase in sal, and no increase in anything else, they're gonna make $35,293. They're gonna get a raise. But the person that was at Step 13...
Is stuck.
Is stuck.
Correct.
So some employees are gonna get zero, some are gonna get 3 percent, and the ones that's in the chat, the other chat's gonna get 1 percent. So...
So the employees that have been there a while...
So, I'm gonna...
Well, the employees that have been there a while but aren't making efforts to increase themselves in tracks. We've got something very similar where I work, where you have your grade levels, and you can max out at a grade level, and if you don't go above and beyond and get moved to a different title, basically, you're not seeing much change year to year.
So if you don't get any, as more education, but you're on Step 16, the next year, you're gonna get a 3 percent raise.
So this is saying use experience means...
Wait a second, we, let's, I'm trying to understand this. How does one group get 1 percent? One group that doesn't improve themselves, just because they're still there, gets 3 percent?
Right.
And is this equal to everybody? Do you think this is equal to everybody?
Either group's improving themselves.
Yeah, the pause, and then the jump at the 3 percent isn't something I'm, you know, I've seen before, but as you've said, that's been how it's been for a long time, but I...
Well, why do you say it's been that way for a long time?
But that's what she was just saying, it's this schedule.
The increments between Step 1, Step 2...
I don't remember the 3 percent at the bottom, and the 16, 17, there was like a $500 thing, but...
The 3 percent, you're right, is something new. That was a negotiated aspect of it.
So there's a group that's getting discriminated against in this contract.
The teachers negotiated the contract.
If you're in this, in this group of years, is that fair?
It's always been like that, though, there's always...
No, 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 no.
In the past...
Negotiated, you said.
Can I finish? Next up there. There's always been a top tier to how that salary schedule has been, it's always been a tier to that.
Two, three, four, it's always there.
What's the next year, then? What's the next person gonna get that next year?
51377.
Laura, no. It's boring. Lauren has...
51377.
One.
You're giving, is this person gonna get 3 percent?
This one, yes, if they've been on...
In that contract, is this 3 percent?
No.
No, it doesn't. So this is new. This is, this is new, that the person gets 3 percent and others don't, it gets, it gets frozen.
The first year, though, everybody, even the people in the top tier, normally that top tier would have no increase. Once you hit a certain amount, once you have, you're in so many years, depending on what track you're in, and you'll see where the tracks, if you look at Track 1, you top out in the 13th year, whereas in Track 2, you top out in the 14th year. Moving on to Track 3, you top out in the 15th year, and Track 4. There's only 16. After you reach the 16th year, and people are there a heck of a lot longer, you know, than 16 years in some cases, they're gonna top out, that's it. That's, that's gonna be the maximum they're going to make, unless they're picking up, you know, longevity stipends, things like that along with it, and that's part of why there's the longevity stipends, is for that kind of thing. Those longevity stipends don't kick in for a little while, but you still have that going on in there. This is a model that's used by many, many school districts around here. Some of them top out a lot sooner than you do, some of them go, some of them will go up to 18 years. 16 is about the average. This isn't anything new, really. This is the salary schedule, pretty much we've already always had, but we've added 1 percent on to this.
So would it be fair to assume, though, that...
That's very correct.
You have somebody who's worked at the school for 12 years, now all of a sudden they're looking at one, two, three, four years in a row, where maybe they're not gonna go forward with their education, because for whatever reason. So what's the incentive for them to stay? And wouldn't that be motivation to look for a job elsewhere, because they've got 12 years of experience? So it's not, I mean, your own system is the one who's pushing the good teachers out the door.
I just, I kinda disagree, and I, let me just say why I think this system makes a lot of sense.
Go, Steve, go.
Okay, for instance, on Track 1, okay, of course you started a low number, it's a bachelor's degree essentially, with no additional credits, okay? They haven't had an opportunity to improve themselves, they're essentially just out of school, okay? And they're working towards getting the 20 credits. Now, if you go, now if that person with a bachelor's degree goes up, works for 13 years, and has not amassed 20 credits to take them to the next track, that, that person essentially is lacking a certain amount of motivation in terms of keeping up with the state of the art in the education process. So to incentivize that person to make more money, they have to make a decision somewhere between years 10 and 13, if they wanna get a raise, they're gonna have to go to school and start getting the 20 credits, so they move from Track 1 to Track 2. Track 2 is a BS, Bachelor, BA plus 20, and that's, and that's the same rationale right there. If, if you go, if you go with the same credits for 20 years, and you're at, for instance, you're, and you're maxing out here at around 14, Step 14, you've lost your motivation, well, we'll try to incentivize you monetarily to go back to school, learn something additional, and take you up to the next track, okay, and forward. So if I was designing a compensation system, okay, this is the type of compensation system that kinda makes sense to me.
Okay, now, let's look at your numbers here. You say that about going to the next track.
Right.
Or you can wait four years, and you get a 3 percent.
Right.
Everybody else is getting 1.
No, that's not, that's a one-time, that's not 3 percent every year. That's a one-time.
From 13, year 13 to 16, they froze.
Yep, but that's...
Steve just talked about the incentive. For those three years, there's no incentive. And then on top of that, you just wait four years, and you get a 3 percent raise?
No, you don't get a 3 percent. No, no, that's a one-time, the 3 percent's a one-time. And that's next year. In 2012, 2013, the people that are sitting on 16, they're the only ones that get that 3 percent one time.
What do the rest of the people in the chat get?
They get the 1 percent.
1.
And they get their step.
And their step, and if they fall in that area where there's no increase, then there's no increase by...
You are freezing people for four years.
No, no.
The 3 percent, no.
They don't get the 3 percent.
If you would've done this, the 3 percent should've happened, on, on Track 1, it should've happened in year 13.
I see what you're saying, I do see that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But this, but they don't get, they don't get the 3 percent, if they wait the three years, they're, they're not promised that 3 percent.
Yes, they are.
No, they're not.
Just this one, the people who are there right now.
No, it's not, it's one, it's one time.
One time.
It's only in 2012, 2013. It's, and then next year, it's a 1 percent.
What's the number? What is the number they're gonna get? Figure the numbers.
The number, I can tell you, the number's...
51,891.
Right, okay, so then, what they're gonna...
Well, they're going up 1 percent.
So they're gonna retreat, so now you're telling me they're gonna retreat next year? They're gonna get 3 percent, and then the next year, they're gonna go back to the 58, 51,891?
No, no. Mr. Carr, can I speak?
Figure the numbers.
I'm telling you the numbers, I've got the answer right here officially, let me answer. A teacher that would be, a teacher would be getting $52,918. Would, that's what they would be looking at, and that's a one-time thing. Teachers on, I read this to you earlier, a teacher on Track 1, Step 16, will be paid 51,000, or, I'm sorry, $52,918. A teacher at Track 4, Step 16, would be paid 64,408. I can get you the different, you know, I can get you Track 2 and Track 3, or whatever that's, that I don't have here, but that's to give you an idea, and an example.
I'd just like to say, too, is that if you're on Track 1, Step 13, and then you go to school, and you continue on with your education, and then you're gonna jump to Track 2, you're really not gonna make that much more money to, you know, in comparison to what it's gonna cost you to get another degree. And, to be honest with you...
Doesn't cost them, it costs them.
I think that the amount of administration that's over their heads, why bother? They've got so many cooks stirring the stew there. Why bother? You have Director of Curriculum, you've got the SAU that is involved in everything now, Kathy Holt, the Superintendent is involved, you've got so many people saying you got a curriculum team, you've got this, you've got that, you've got that, it's too much. And so, I don't know, I think that's a deterrent, but...
You know, the other things to consider, too, if you look at the entire benefit package, though, too, you've got sick day, you've got the sick day buyback, you've got, there are other benefits that are available to the senior teachers, they have to, you know, the veteran teachers. It doesn't short-change them, it gets them to either move and step in track, and this is a system, this is no different than, than what was in the last contract, or the contract before that, where they moved and stepped in track, it's just been bumped up 1 percent, is the difference.
Like question to the business manager, if I could?
Yes.
And I don't know if you can answer this at all. The professional staff who will essentially mirror this salary schedule are generally at the high, generally at the high end, they're, they're generally, you know, making in excess of $50,000 a year, okay? Okay, and intuitively, or can you estimate, for any kind of number, how much that would really add to the contract? Because these people are going to be moving in lockstep with the teachers, but that number is not here, figured in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, if, if I can address that, if you don't mind. After your comments last year and this budget committee's comments, one thing that we've done actually on both boards is worked hard to get the language in the contracts for directors and administrators to take out references to the teachers' contract. So that when we negotiate a contract with those individuals, it is reflective of what we feel is, is due to them.
It is not reflective of the teachers' agreement.
It's not reflective of the teachers. We have worked hard to do that. That's one thing. Policy committee with JMA, that's something that I'm on. We've worked to do that. We've, we've come up with a template that has taken that out of there because of those concerns. And same with the, the Alton contracts. It's something we did last year. So there is not a direct correlation. You've gone through the budget for next year. You've seen what the numbers are. This contract, proposed contract with the ATA, hasn't passed. Okay, so what you've seen in here, you've seen what our administrators, what our directors are going to be getting for compensation. And it's not tied, it's not tied to this.
My, my, my personal, my personal opinion is, as a practical matter, these people, the professionals, and I'm not saying they're not entitled to the money, not one bit, they are. But they, in the past, have expected to be in lockstep with the teachers. As a year goes by, they, you know, and I've been here for 10 years and, and I just got my master's, for instance, I expect this. They're, you're going to have significant personnel issues and compensation issues if the next contract that you have them sign on a year-to-year basis does not reflect this salary schedule. And my guess is, and you can tell me if I'm way off base, is you'll defer to that unhappiness and probably 90, have a 90% correlation, you know, to this salary schedule. Now, you're not in charge of that. So I know you can't speak to that.
No, but actually, I do want to speak to that. Because we brought forth, probably at one of the very first budget meetings with you, the merit increases, whether it be support staff or administration. And based on our evaluation is how we receive merit increase. So it has nothing to do with the teachers' contract, what they are or are not receiving. The only thing, I can tell you this, that is tied to the teachers' contract, specifically by the verbiage on it, is our health insurance. That is the only thing. So that, I can say, yes, it's directly tied. So if it passes, I will be paying more, 1% more in my health insurance.
Okay.
So it goes up.
So are the administrators on a merit-based pay?
The administrators, yes, are on a merit.
The support staff, correct?
Same as the support staff.
Right.
Correct. So it does not mirror that. So I can honestly say that. And we provided to you with the number count of, of people who received what percentage. And it was all over the place. And I do believe you were actually pleased to see that it wasn't just everyone got one carte blanche. It was all over the place, depending on their merit.
I feel, I feel absolutely a lot better, you know, if that is, in fact, the new policy going forward.
And that's, and something else, just to address that, that's something, you know, when the board got those merit raises to approve them, I put on my Steve Miller hat. What's Steve going to ask when he gets this? Because I've heard you for years ask that question, and I knew it, you know. And we, we broke it down that night before we even approved it as a board. We broke it down to say, you know, we've got five people getting, and this is just me making up these numbers, but, you know, we've got five people getting 3%. We've got seven people getting 2.5%. You know, all that. We made sure that it wasn't a shotgun raise kind of thing going through because we know that that's a concern.
It was a bell curve. It looked fine. Okay.
I have it if you want to see it.
I've seen it.
I still, I still got to get my question answered.
Okay.
I still, I still don't think we're answering this right. I'm on step, I'm on 2012, 13.
I didn't bring it. I have it on my...
I'm listening.
I'm on 2012, 13. I'm a teacher, track one. My pay at 13 years will be?
Fifty-one, eight, nine, one.
Fifty-one, eight, nine, one. Next year, I'm going to flip the page. I'm going to track 14. I'm going to have another year. What will my pay be?
Fifty-one, eight, nine, one.
That sounds to me like the same number.
It is.
It is.
Zero increase.
Correct.
That would be the same thing for 14 to 15, wouldn't it?
Yes.
And 15 to 16?
If there's no contract.
Right. What's your contract?
But step 16, though, that's where they do go up, though. Anybody on step 16, it does go up.
And for everybody else that's between...
For two years.
On that, from 12 to one, if I'm a first-year teacher, I'll go up from 33, 800.
Yep, and, you know, something...
Wait a minute. What will I get next year?
If what? I'm sorry.
I'm on track one.
Yep.
Step one.
Yep.
I look, I see 33, 800.
Yep.
What will I be next year?
You'll be track one, step two, 35, 293?
A raise.
Yep, that's a step.
Some get a raise and some don't. A few don't.
Well, this...
Everybody gets a raise except for that group and the group under track two and the group under track three.
Correct.
You think this is fair, contract?
This is what was negotiated with the Alton Teachers Association. And this is the way it has been set up. Previously, they got colas. And then that's where they would get their increase. But every year, from 13, 14, 15, 16, they've always been sitting there with a chance of not getting a raise unless there was a cola.
Now, we're not...
It's been like this since...
Still doing colas?
Huh?
No, we don't.
No, we are not.
We changed it. Should I thought? Well, they're going to get a 1% now. Not for a couple of years. That's the problem, that's what I'm saying. This isn't, this isn't fair across the board. So 13 to 15 gets a 1%.
The whole, the whole schedule gets a 1% next year.
From where they are right now.
Except for those years. Some get it, some are going to get a raise.
But this is really, though, but once they max out on those stepping tracks, that's that, and that's the way it is in pretty much every district in, in this state.
You don't then add up to, and then you don't give a 3% at the end. If they're fro, if, if they come up to the top, you don't then all of a sudden give them a 3%. Then they're not, they're not staying the same. It's like Steve said.
Lauren, that 3% is one year. That's only for this next, right here it says. If you were on step 16 in 2011, 2012, you get 3%.
Yep, and how about the next year?
The next year, they get 1% of that.
So they're still getting another raise where these people are frozen?
They are.
Can I, maybe I could ask you just a...
Wait a second, wait a second. Did you people know this? Did you see this flaw in this when you passed it?
I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't consider it a flaw. I know you do. I don't.
Okay, did you, this, this little issue? Did you see this little issue before, when, before you people voted on it?
I saw this little issue. And this little issue is common in many other school districts' contracts. The thing is, is you look at a scattergram and where the teachers are in stepping track, this is what they, this is what...
Where do you get that information? Where are you pulling that out of your hat? Come on. That's a loan. What is this? Where is this? Where do you see that in this? Do you see that in the year before, and the year before, and the year before?
Yes.
Yes.
No, you do not see a 3% raise at the bottom.
No, you don't see a 3%.
Not the 3%, no, 3% is just...
Except the $500.
This year, they got a one-time payment. And then they go, they make less money after this year if this doesn't pass.
Every year, they get a one-time payment.
Yep.
No, they do. They, they have a year...
In one form or another, it's a one-time payment. It's over here every year.
This would be, they've had two years when they have not moved in, in staff. They have two years when they haven't. They had one year when they didn't have a contract. They received no pay increase. They had, this year, when they received a contract, they had a one-time payment. If this doesn't pass...
You make up for the year they didn't get.
No, they only, no.
No, it's 500, it was like 500 dollars, yeah.
It was only 500 dollars.
So, and...
But isn't it true, though, that the year with no contract and there was no increase, but there was an increase in their benefits, the cost of the town? And also, don't forget that the state's been cost shifting. So as the town is, the taxpayers are picking up the cost shifting from the state for the retirement fund?
Retirement.
That, and that, sort of through the back door, that's a raise.
They had to contribute more, too.
They have to contribute more, too.
Right, so...
They had to contribute more, too. So that means they lost money.
And went out 2% for everyone in retirement.
I ask a question on another issue. When a person takes a leave of absence, do they still get benefits?
If it's a medical leave of absence? Are you talking like long-term disability?
Other than educational enrichment. If they take an unpaid leave of absence, do they still get benefits?
Just for clarification, you said educational enrichment just now. That went out, we, we got rid of...
Sabbatical.
Sabbatical, that's gone.
No, no, that's not what I'm talking about. Under leave of absence, unpaid leaves of absence for purposes other than educational enrichment may be granted. I'm just saying, do they still get benefits when they're not working for us?
If they take leave under FMLA, that's the only thing I can address right now, is yes, they do.
Okay, if they take it for another personal reason? I'm taking a year off?
I've never had anyone do that while I'm there.
I understand.
So I don't know. I don't know of the answer. No.
Then who interprets the contract?
Well, let me...
That would probably go to the superintendent and the school board.
That's, no, that's fair. If you, you know, you don't have...
The Department of Labor might define some of the definitions on this section, too.
That's all right. If you don't have a definitive answer, I understand. Another question is that a teacher who's been a teacher at the school for five years only gets evaluated formally every three years. Can't something, does it take, something can blow up in years one, two, and three, and they don't get a formal evaluation? I understand they can have an informal evaluation. Anybody can do that. But there are restrictions on what can be placed in their file, et cetera. So the way I understand it, if you have a teacher who is not performing to standard, is not generating a classroom that are meeting proficiencies, that there's not a, that they can't even be evaluated formally for three years. And what are the, what happens to those poor kids for three years? I'm just curious.
Well, they have, the law has changed to five years now.
No, no, five years before they qualify for every three years.
Right, but, so the, which ones are you talking about?
Okay, what I'm saying, a teacher's been there five years.
Our five years has been 10.
Okay, and hypothetically, does a very, very poor job for the next two years, they can't even be formally evaluated.
Well, they can.
No, it can't. Absolutely not.
Why do you say that?
Okay, evaluations. Teachers having reached five years of service with the district will be formally evaluated at least once every three years.
At least once.
Hmm?
At least once.
If there's a problem, they can be evaluated.
They can be a problem?
If they, they can be put on a improvement plan.
Yep.
That interpretation, that interpretation makes sense to me. That's, that's absolutely fine.
Once you've been there five years and you have tenure, then it's more difficult to get rid of a teacher. That's a...
Okay, then, in which case, that's a good addition from the previous contract. Okay, I'll tell you, on, on, you know, on a whole, you know, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied that this is a, contract should go forward.
Thank you.
You know, I think it's, I think it economically makes sense because of what you said about the staff, about the staff, about the professional staffing. I saw, you know, economically, there's good offsets here. And by, by adjusting the sabbatical leave and some of the, and some of the wording, making superintendent have discretion, for instance, over the amount of days, you know, away, I think that's unbalanced. It's all positive.
Thank you very much.
I'd be inclined to, I'm inclined to vote for the contract.
Thank you.
That's my position.
I am extremely disappointed that the co-pay did not go up. I think in this economic times, well, that's the least they could do.
The first year, they lost the point of service. And the second year goes up a percentage.
Something I want to add with the...
A percentage.
Yep. Well, with them losing the point of service, that's a $33,000 savings to the district right there. And that's, that final number that you have...
$33,000 compared to what's the total, what's the total line item for insurance?
A lot.
A lot. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah.
It's, but still, though, that point of service, though, was a lot more expensive. So that's what, that would, the teachers, if they want to hold on to that, they would be paying the difference than what they would pay if they were to go to the HMO.
Nowhere, nowhere do you see a 9% co-pay for a family plan or individual plan or for couples. Nowhere, except for...
And the most that we could have gone up to would have been 4% by law. So, I mean...
I would have taken that.
I know, I hear you.
And you know, you go out and you do all this cost comparison with all the other districts for what kind of lights you want and how big you want this and how fancy you want that. But do you ever do cost comparisons to what other districts are doing as far as one school district cut a couple million dollars from their budget this year? Others have laid off staff? I mean, all kinds of things that you, those things I don't ever hear that you've done a cost comparison on or that you've seen what other districts are doing. So...
We, we have actually. And if, if there's something, if there's something that we do or I do personally, before getting ready to go into this, you know, I looked at what all the districts around the lake, pretty much, you know, towns similar to us. You know, there's two other towns that are bringing forward contracts at this time. Moulton Borough, I believe, is bringing forward. I want to say it's a two- or three-year contract. It's a six-digit number, you know. I mean, it's a, it's a big contract. And I was just kind of surprised at what was coming forward And I was just kind of surprised at what was coming forward because I was trying to anticipate what, what the comments would be tonight, you know, what the questions would be. And just also going into negotiations, just looking at what the other districts are doing. What do they have for benefits? What are they doing with longevity, with, with buybacks, with things like that? You know, there's a lot of, there's nine other districts I looked at, and, you know, I'm sure Linda's, Linda's had more experience with this.
And comparative student enrollment, and I mean...
Yeah, and absolutely.
The last time I counted, there were five students per staff person in that building, Alton. If you count all the staff that we're paying to be, to run that school. Five students per every adult in that building. And there's probably other adults that I'm not even aware of that I haven't counted. But that would include your custodial staff and your, your cooks and stuff.
I mean, if you're, you're putting all that in there, I mean, the...
Think about that.
The school, the school is the biggest employer in town. I mean, there's just no doubt about it. I think after that, it's the town, and then I think it's McDonald's.
Hannaford.
Hannafords?
Hannaford.
Any more? I just want to clarify this one thing. I'm looking at this correctly. Track one, fill in the rest of the year. After 16, if I put year 17 in, they're going to get, okay, wait a minute. Year 13, they get 51891. 14, they get 51891. 15th year, 51891.
Well, then we're doing a new contract now.
16th.
Then we're doing a new contract. This is a two-year contract.
It's only a two-year contract.
Okay, all right then. If I was at 15, 891 on year 16, now I go up, I'm going to get 52, 918.
That's what you had said, right?
Yep, yeah, and that's all, that's right.
And so I'm on 17, year 17, track one. Next year, second year of this contract, I'll be in year 18, and I'll get 53,447.
No, once they hit off the track...
18, year 18.
Once they're, correct me if I'm wrong, once people are at 16, they can't go any further. There's no other steps to increase them to. It does address in this contract for the two years, that people that are at step 16 will receive a percentage, but it's only for those at that particular year. Once they've hit 16, they don't continue on any step or track, they're off track.
But this little paragraph in the, this little paragraph says there'll be 53,447.
That's right. It states that whomever might be on 16 in year one of the contract will receive that. In year two, if they're on 16, they'll receive 1%.